Return from recess. Starting on the general department. I'll make some changes. So council salaries, 2 percent. Insurance stayed the same. That was with an additional officer. Bike command went up. That was with an additional officer. Additional position. As code enforcement officer and grant runner. Let's see. Civil perth, a decrease in that. Police perth had an increase. That was with an aid officer. Longevity increased based on amount of years that people have. Area plan, I believe a 2 percent. Board of Works, I wouldn't have a discussion on that, what the council thought. Training seminars increased by 200 based on expenses about halfway through the year. Do you want to start with those or can I just do a brief overview of all these line items?
So who's going to the training seminars? What is this paying for? What employees? In its general as opposed to a specific department?
So that is dues for the Association of Indiana Municipalities is really always spent out of it in 2018.
That's like $1,800, right?
What's that?
Those dues, aren't they 1,800? Are you talking about IAC or?
I've got combined, I've got $990 for aim that we've taken out of training seminars out of that line item.
So where do we take the rest of it? It's like 1,800 a year.
We take my dues out of mayor's seminars and training. And that's all I've got for 2017, or for 2018.
So what is aim? Is that?
That's what used to be IAC. The Association of Assistant Towns is now accelerating Indiana Municipalities.
Maybe we could call it something that has been training seminars that gets paid a little bit.
Well, I know back in 16, Councilman Seawright, Chappell and I went to something down in Indianapolis that was.
Yep.
It was SpongeBob IAC, but it was training.
It was for a new.
City council school for one of the better term.
I went to that two years ago.
And last year, looks like we spent $1,056. That was, we also, last year, we did supervisor training on identifying employees who may be using drugs. But Superintendent Lyons, Myers, Vance, Sibley, Chief Moll, Lian and I went to. Or actually, we had it here.
So we're just going through this willy-nilly or what are we doing?
We just want to do it line item by line item. So 2 percent for council, any objections? Insurance, we'll get back to that. Civil perth and police perth, which I command I'd like to get back to after we discuss another position. Longevity, that's based off of what the ordinance says. There any injections of the 6150? Area plan, 2 percent.
Not necessary, but she wanted us to do it. I suppose we could.
They do it every year.
Well, we started, actually, between 16 and 17 is when we started the 2 percent. Board of Works, that's something I wanted a discussion on. I put in, along with the judge getting paid the same as the council, Board of Works members getting paid the same as the council. It's not set in stone. It's not, not really too firm on it. But I wanted to hear the council's discussion of it.
Well, I think they ought to get just what we get, 2 percent. I've done in favor of giving a 518.9 percent increase to nobody. Not out of our field, that's how I feel.
Yeah, but they go to two meetings a month and they get $600.
That's $25 a meeting. I know that Westlock yet, Board of Works gets zero. So I think 2 percent is, I mean, if two meetings a month. I mean, I've been on Board of Works for numerous years. Indicative certainly on Board of Works. I don't think you do it because you want to be paid. You do it because it's a service. And it takes an hour or less for $25. I think 2 percent is adequate.
Agreed. Did you just say doesn't pay their Board of Works, Westlock yet? How do they get by?
Paying $50 is forever special even.
2 percent?
We agree with the 2 percent.
Training in seminars, 1,200. Any objections? Miscellaneous office supplies, kept at 4,500. We reduced it in 2018 from 5,000 to 4,500.
And who uses this office supply? I mean, when we have departments that have office supplies within there.
So this is for, that's what the expenditure, so we've got tax forms, pocket files, employment applications. So really, this is generally a third of the stuff that would be.
All right, I was gonna say, because it comes out of mine and it comes out of water and waste, our tax form. We got, and fired her, so I didn't quite understand why it's coming out of general.
2017, we didn't even spend half of the 5,000 that was budgeted. 2340, 24.
It just feels like it's not indicative of a department expense. I would rather it be added into the clerk's budget or something. I just hate it when the general becomes, oh, there's money in general, let's just take it out of that. It just becomes a slush fund.
Well, that's not good too easy, because sometimes I use that to transfer when you're negative.
Yeah, that's probably true.
So, I mean, within that, we've got coffee for the break room, we've got wreaths for the city building. We've got a third of the cost of some envelopes, a fifth of the cost of some copy paper, shredding old files. So it seems to be stuff that encompasses all the departments, but it seems to be split.
Five ways, so you're taking it out of general too. But we didn't use to.
Looks like 3,000 would cover that though.
Good done, Mayor. I mean, whatever reason, it's paying, just roll back into general.
How much did you spend?
2340, 24. What?
2340.
And 17? We spent, oh, no, yeah, sorry. Let me see what our expenses were. Tax forms, 11 by 8 sheets, subscriptions to comic. Flags, air fresheners, arena stuff through city hall.
Flags as in the American flag?
Yeah, but that should have come out of the city building.
Wizard.
Additorial.
Six by 10, all these are flags, seven at $84 each.
What's everybody think about 3,000 for that?
It's like five hole.
Five six in Italian, it's cheaper, but.
So it is the regular five hole.
Let's see.
It shouldn't be office as it should be.
3,000?
How did it say that?
Equipment repair, another one, we only spent 115 in 2017, 0 in 16, 373 in 15. We did spend about 1,500 in 2014.
So it's equipment repair for what? What department? Just seems like, let it be departmental correct instead of.
Well, this was, so back in 14, when we had larger expenditure. That was for a projector, which all the departments use. And then lobby copier for the lease of a copier, and it wasn't the entire, it was just a third or a fourth of the lease of a copier.
Projector, they use that for branding.
Use it for water meetings, use it for.
It's all right, 1,500, I mean, if it gets used.
Attorney decreased to 17,500. Any objection to that?
Why do we? Well, let's see, it's here, 16, we allocated 15, and 17, 25, and 18, 20, and now it went to 17, 5. Why is that?
Because I anticipated we'd have additional expenditures than what we ended up having. Back in 2016 is when we got sued by the Office Tavern, we had $23,000 in expenses.
For 17, yeah.
So we did spend 14,270 in 2017.
Like we get sued by the Office Tavern, I don't think.
There's a parking sidewalk.
So you think 17, 570, is that what you're saying?
I do. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You had discussion?
Engineering consulting, it kept at 10,000. Really, I haven't used this line item a lot, but it's something that, it's one of those unknowns that if you have a project coming in, you have some stormwater questions, something that could be used. I'd like to have it there. If it doesn't get spent, it gets returned to general. Any discussion on that line item?
Spent 2,835 of that 10,013 cents last year. You've got engineering and consulting and other line items too, don't you?
We do not have engineering proposed on this one. While we do, we have 7,000.
Seems like a high amount.
Not really, if you look at some of their bills.
For what though?
As I said, you don't ever know what we may run into the.
But we've got it.
If you need it, you got it. And then if you don't, it rolls back into the general, so you're not likely losing it.
But don't we have those things in other budgets?
We've got, I've got 7,000 budgeted for engineering, the street department for 2019. And that's based off encumbering 100,000 for legal to go towards Samuel Roy if we get it for the inspection on that. I wouldn't doubt that it's somewhere between 90 and 110,000 dollars in engineering, or in inspection for that project.
I just think it's too much.
Any recommendation on consulting? So if you need the money we don't have, we have to do additional appropriation. So it doesn't make sense, because it all goes back.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to tell you too. I understand your concept of trimming the budget. But when you get it to the point, all right, for example, every time a new employee comes on board. So you can say, okay, here's your insurance cost for the year. No, it isn't. It is if nothing changed, if status stays the same. If two or three employees quit, there's additional money going into health savings. It's, I can't make it to be a straight arrow. And if you trim that budget so tight that I can't transfer money around at the end of the year, then you've got to do an additional appropriation.
There you go.
Which we're going to do an additional at the end of this year.
She don't want to do it anymore than you have to.
No, I don't. It's a lot of work.
But if you appropriate it, it can be spent.
It can be spent, but if you don't spend it, it just goes back into general.
But if we overspend it, then you're going to be.
If you overspend it, and you cut it down so tight, you overspend, then I've got to do an additional.
Well, that's a good one.
Doesn't affect the tax base, it's just money going back and forth. You can relieve consulting.
At my suggestion.
At my suggestion, we leave it at 10,000.
That way, Lian don't have the problem.
Any further discussion on that line item? Attorney, clerk, council, you guys want to give it 5,000? Mileage, we've got 750.
That's not full.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. In 2015, it was for the mayor's office, but we had something in mind.
If you ever use it, you would be in yours.
Used $110, 21 cents last year.
I don't really get to go to school.
So mileage, last year was for Donna, for Keystone Training, and for Maryland for May training.
Used $110.21 in 17.
Let's decrease it to 5.
Telephone, I proposed an increase of 500, just based off where we were, I think halfway through the year. We were 8,079. I bumped that up another 500. Any objections? Computers, I left the same at 15,000. Halfway through this year, we'd spent 4,700. Last year, we spent 5,200. The year before that, we spent 17,000.
So who, what department is that for?
One time, I think we took part of mine out of that one. We upgraded all three of ours down there, and we're due again.
So that's the server monitor, which is all city hall.
Why couldn't it not be in your budget though? It just seems.
I think so, but I think.
Oh, because it gets the support more than just the clerk's office.
The server would have it.
The server does. And really, I think Aaron had a problem with his computer last year, so they came in. I think I had a problem with mine, they came in. So you could split, I mean, you could split it up to $3,000 sections and put it in five departments. So we're, 15,001, and let the department use the rest of the year.
I like that. Splitting that up, I like that holds people more accountable.
You can't split mine if you took a computer out of mine.
I did, because I figured all of us would take it out of this.
So I'm just going to take it out of yours then.
They just take it out of general.
That was my thought.
But my training was always that general was not the slush fund. But, you know, everybody goes, oh, well, just take it out of general. Don't take it out of my account, just take it out of general. And, you know, it's just, it's just not indicative of where the money is going, to what department, is all I'm saying. I'm not so objecting to the 15,000. I don't, I mean, if we need it, we need it, but I just don't think it's, it's very self-explanatory of who's getting that, what department is needing it.
I think part of that is because year to year, it's going to change so much. Within a small city that we have, and the amount of people that we have. It's hard to forecast who's going to have an issue with their computer from year to year.
Well, next year, I plan on replacing three units down there. But I don't do that every three or four years, five years, so.
Yeah, but we can budget that.
It's not an expense that I do all the time.
But we can budget that, if you prepare us, we can budget that for your department. That's no different than the police cars and other, other things like that.
So for 2019, in the clerk's department, we can add computers, for instance, as part of the. I don't care that we keep it here for now. I don't care.
To me, I mean, when you're, you got, let's see, the city website, email addresses, bid defender, which goes on all the computers. To split that stuff up would be unnecessary. And then, clerk treasurer would have to take it from five different line items, which you want to pay a bill for each of those.
Okay, just leave it the way it is for.
Well, if I knew that.
But this year, I think we ought to put in the clerk's budget. If she's saying next year she's going to replace computers, we need to put computers in her budget.
Yes.
There's miscellaneous computer. Okay, moving on.
Advertising, a decrease by 1,000. The most we had in the last five years was, we spent, just shy of 1,000 back in 2013. Any objections to 1,000?
None.
You only spent $44 last year, 17. 227. Oh, I'm sorry, 227, still.
And what's this advertising for? Like promoting the city or advertising for what?
I believe this is legal advertising for public hearings.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah. Owner occupied ads for cemetery. Public notice, additional appropriation, notice to bidders. Those are kind of advertising.
And how much would the expenditure for what?
Well, it's decreased. I think that's adequate. Leave it at 1,000.
All right. Property and vehicle insurance. I kept it the same, even though our expenses are a lot higher. Why did I do that?
I don't know, because I just got that new cyber pan. What's that costing us? I thought it was right at 8,000 or 9,000 for it.
So what vehicle insurance is being paid for?
I thought we were short last year. I need to have transferring money to cover insurance. Because at the time, I thought we were going to increase insurance, because we were short. I had to transfer funds to cover that line item. And now we've put on cyber and something else, so.
For that line item, we pay for all insurance, and then it gets reimbursed by.
Water and wastewater pays for their trucks, their buildings, and their liability, and they're part of workman's comp.
Right, but the, so the expenditures for general fund items only total roughly 65,000. So that we revenue in.
So even, even this cyber, so you're, so I'm going to divide the cyber up between them two.
Why, why wouldn't you have entered the extra fiber or not into this by the care of?
Because the expenditures are for all three, general fund, water, and waste. Water and waste reimburse the general fund or a portion of it, but we don't see that on the appropriation report.
Okay.
You'll only see it later on, because I, what I do, water and waste will write us a check for it. I'll revenue it into miscellaneous, and then I will do a budget adjustment against the insurance line item. So you don't see that they paid you for it necessarily. But you'll see that budget adjustment where their revenue goes into miscellaneous or insurance reimbursement, and then it comes back in. So it reflects on the line, it brings it back down.
Yeah, because we had, for 2017, we had additional, or adjusted, about 43,000. So, as soon as our reimbursement from water and waste, yeah, so we should be 5,160. Utilities and streetlights, when Duke comes in to do the change to LED lighting, they anticipated a reduction in our bill, I think approximately $2,600 a month, which amounts to $31,200 a year, so I reduced that by that 31,000. They still leave some fluff in that line item for energy costs if they increase, because we added 10,000 from 17 to 18.
Are you planning on putting more poles up out towards south Washington? I noticed you put them out on East Main. Are you going to go put more LED light down West Main and then up Washington Street?
At this point, no. We added those, I think it was five new poles for on East Main, one on North Washington. Where are the areas that you're talking about?
Up south Washington. And down west main.
How far down West Main?
Close to track. I know there's one there of a thing, but I think that should be with it. Are they obtained oil LED lights?
Yeah, all the ones that are on that view. 215, 230 poles. There should be one at every intersection going down West Main, so we.
I didn't check. I didn't give. I'll check that.
Any discussion on street lights and utilities?
Hydro riddle, leaving the same at 85,000. Maintenance miscellaneous, kept the same at 4,000. Give him a second now. See what expenditures we have to do. Last year, we had plans for city buildings, screws for city sign, pan for city sign, a fourth of the Xerox phaser, printer for clerk's office, and coffee pot. Annual software, the Keystone was the big one, that's twenty-two hundred dollars. And lumbered for a sign.
So if it's for Keystone, why don't we put that in the clerk's budget?
Well.
Well, because the clerk's budget, the clerk services all the departments of the city, they'll find.
Software maintenance, in my budget. Water, waste, and fire territory pays for it, too.
I've got it coming out of, at least in sixteen, coming out of maintenance miscellaneous, maintenance miscellaneous in seventeen. Maintenance miscellaneous in eighteen. As well as fire, water, waste.
So you zeroed it out in her budget, for this, for her furniture, looks like.
Yeah, I think that's because we were taking it out of that line item.
And seventeen, didn't I spend out of that line item?
Which one was it?
Nope, software maintenance, we did not spend in twenty seventeen, we did in twenty sixteen. For camera for the office, for sound device, and support with sound device. For the software maintenance. There's one. Is there any objections to four thousand from miscellaneous maintenance, maintenance miscellaneous?
And once still, don't think it should be zero in her budget. I mean, that doesn't even seem like that's a reasonable picture, that you need nothing, there's only four maintenance in your department, when that's where it's going to be used.
Doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
And I understand that this one's coming out of, for several departments perhaps, but it seems to me like she should still have some directed in her budget.
Well, the, the only thing that would be coming out is.